... They bear us in broad formation, as the Senate has put it, and we will honor until we reach our time. In the meantime, does anyone have anything to do with the opposite?
I just wanted to thank everyone. We had a clean-up day on Saturday. We were able to pick up 22 tons of rubbish around the community. We had a lot of help. Some of them were in the audience today. And I'd like to call up Elijah, I'm sorry, Isaiah and Abby real quick. I have a ton up here. Isaiah and Abby were two of the youngsters that also helped out of this little organ, organized effort to pick up some of the rubbish. And Abby earned her daisy petal and also green batch. And the daisy petals were being held from the community. The green batch is when you're picking up rubbish and helping over the community. And also Isaiah also handed his green batch as well. So I'd like to congratulate them and thank everyone for their efforts. So, one more time.
Does anyone else have anything to discuss?
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know, on Sunday, there is a special event happening in Waterville. And it is a 35K, it's a sixth annual 35K opposed to Waterville's Healthy Women. It's being held on Sunday. It's a great event for families. It is encouraging all of us to have awareness of the specialization of power costumes. And so we encourage everyone to dress up in their most imaginative, scariest costumes and come out. We have a kids' fun run that starts at 9:30. And we have a kids' costume contest with prizes, and all the kids get hoodie bags. And then we have an adult costume contest. It's really popular and very competitive. And then we have the 5K, that goes the entire loop through Popey Campus, down to Waterville, up North Street. It's a great event. And I have flyers if you guys are interested here. If you have any questions or any other information, you can check out our website, which is h2h2w.org. It is $5 for the students for the kid program, and we are offering scholarships. So we want as many kids out as possible to do the program, to pick up costumes and sort them out the way it should be. So, everybody is okay.
Does anyone else have anything to say? I was going to ask you, of course, you want the water to use again.
Well, Mike said we didn't touch down, so... However, this Friday night is the regular season day for water football, we can play all the time. And then we will have the playoffs.
Is your Saturday the only one?
No, I've been waiting for Friday.
I have a couple items under the management report, which is usually at the end, but I can do it now. Give Karen three more minutes to get here. And basically, it's just a notification of the different committees. The meeting, the last Wednesday, the committee looking at the Spring Street intersection, the five-way intersections, in terms of improving pedestrian access through that intersection. The committee met for the first time. And the study itself will be pretty accelerated because it's due to be completed before January 1. Whether that goal can be met, I'm not sure, but I just want to keep the council informed. We are meeting with a consultant to continue to go forward with that. The airport advisory committee met last week. And I think there's a couple of exciting things that are going to be coming up that you'll hear about later in terms of continued use of our hangar by BlackBerry Aviation. You know, they're renting a piece of our big hangar now, but their business has increased so much that it's close to the point where they could use the entire hangar. So we're looking at ways to try to make that happen. So, as I said, you'll be hearing more about that because we'd have to come back to the council to amend the lease with BlackBerry Aviation. Tomorrow afternoon, the finance committee is meeting, and that's Councilor O'Donnell, Councilor Thomas, and the council chair, Stuber. To talk about the bond issue items, you'll be going on in December probably, or later on. And also the economic development question about with the growth council and how does the city continue to get economic services. So the finance committee is going to be discussing those before those items come back to the full council.
Mike, would you consider having someone just to make a presentation in the finance committee?
That's my next item, thank you. They completed their study, and I wanted them to come in prior to a full public hearing so they could meet with this group of us. So I know that you've been interested, Councilor Thomas has been interested in particular. But we can let all the council know that at some point in the next couple of weeks, we can have sewer district personnel and their consultant come in to talk about this. Generally, I think it's good news to save because we have savings of about 70,000 loans. That's projectiveness. I know you have a lot of other questions, but... So I think the best thing is to have that working group first before they hold the public hearing. Before them. So I will set that up. And really, those are the only items on my list. Unless anyone has a question.
You can sit down. Hello, it's Ryan. Where are we?
Um, we're in Marston.
I'm going to... Thank you for letting me do the last step.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, we have... My favorite part of the evening. An opportunity to thank the men in blue, I have a men in blue, I'm trying to think of the men in blue. And I really appreciate all of you and all of the work that gets done every day, every night. And the kind of stuff that doesn't generally get recognized. I think that people take for granted the safety of our state, and I know it. So I really appreciate that, that you all are there. As a special thank you, we have a couple of occasions that were no ready and we've connected. So, how about, yeah? Lincoln Ryder, Dave, Karen, Joshua, and Alan Maine. Okay, so, thank you all. I'm going to read to everybody why we're doing this tonight, and then to join you. Thank you. This is a mayoral resignation. In the early morning hours of October 24th, 24th, a 45-year-old male left a party with attending right up the street in Waterville and started walking to his residence, located in the front. While walking on Carter Memorial Drive, the individual fell on top of a 25-foot cement impound containing wall, landing into the drainage ditch below. He suffered life-threatening injuries and was not able to make his way back to the roadway. He was reported missing by his wife, and when he was finally located and rescued, he was taken to Major General Hospital and eventually taken by a lifeline helicopter to main medical center in Portland. On the day of that morning, Sergeant Lincoln Ryder alerted alert to locate the missing man. Although this is not a high-priority public service, and there was no indication that the missing man was in any personal danger, Sergeant Ryder immediately identified possible routes to the address to get home. One of the obvious roads that may be used to travel to Winslow was Carter Memorial Drive. Sergeant Ryder drove to Carter Memorial Drive and started looking for the missing man. Sergeant Ryder did far more than just drive to the road to locate the man. He actually stopped and looked over every impediment that may conceal a person that was down and injured. One of the spots he checked was a 25-foot cement impound containing wall on the east side of the road. While checking that area, he located the man who had fallen from a cement containing wall and was lying in a ditch. Sergeant Ryder immediately called for medical personnel and then cut a path down to the very steep impediment through the dense vegetation so that medical help could reach the victim. Had Sergeant Ryder not been so diligent in his search for the missing man, it is unlikely that he would have been found in the final manner, and he may have died from his injuries. In light of his exemplary actions, I, Eric Aaron, head come behalf of the city council and residents of the city of Waterville to hereby recognize Sergeant Lincoln Ryder and take this opportunity to commend and thank him for making every effort to locate and save the life of this individual. In witness where I might set my hand, this deal is planned for today on October 1st, 2014. Okay, so, another mayoral recognition. On the morning of August 27th, 2014, a bicyclist was struck by a van as the vehicle was exiting the Ellen Plaza Shopping Center and attempting to make a left-hand turn onto Upper Main Street. The bicyclist, 28-year-old Matthew Grover, was knocked to the ground and ran over by a van. Grover was dragged approximately 20 to 30 feet before the van stopped, hitting Grover between the surface of the road and the vehicle's undercarriage. The weight of the van compressed Grover's upper body and committed extremely difficult for him to breathe and caused a severe burn. Grover suffered other life-threatening injuries, including a nearby severed arm at the shoulder and broken arm. Fortunately, there were three city police officers nearby who rushed to the scene and immediately began to provide assistance in the busy intersection. They found a way to jack up the van and remove Mr. Grover. They provided encouragement and support to let him know that help is on the way. In light thereof, in these heroic actions, I, Eric Aaron, head come behalf of the city council and residents of Waterville to hereby recognize Detective Dan Karen, Detective Joshua, and School Resource Officer Alan Maine, who put their own lives at risk and by doing so, sure to save the life of the missing man. In witness where I do hereby set my hand, this deal is planned for today on October 2nd, 2014. Really, this is very small, but you should know there are... We have us to... Not thinking of you, but totally... Are you going to stay? I'm ready. Did we do community goals?
Yes.
I'm finished. Did I still go with the consensus number?
Gotcha.
Uh, um...
Move to adopt.
Order number 145, this is to here on the floor. An order providing for authorization to purchase a laser shot firearm training system. Being hereby ordered by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That the city council hereby authorize the purchase of a laser shot firearms training system for $20,000 and agrees to accept a $10,000 MMA safety training grant with remaining $10,000 coming from a $21,000 reimbursement from the MMA, property casualty, and workers compensation programs. The attached memo describes in greater detail the importance of this firearm training program.
Move to adopt. Second.
I'm going to have to talk to Mike Ryder to explain that to you. He's a high-lambed instructor, and he really has an in-depth knowledge of this system. And I think he can do a much better job than I can. So I'll... You can take a moment to give you a quick overview of exactly what that laser shot system is and why it would be beneficial for the park. The laser shot system is a computer-based training system. It runs through a multimedia projector. This is moving out of there in our training room. And what it does is inject simulations, both scenario-based training, so video scenarios that the officer would kind of interact with. The system can be controlled by the instructor. So if a scenario is projected on the screen based on how the officer performs, the instructor controls which branch the scenario takes. So it may turn into a situation where it escalates and no use of force is appropriate. Or it may range in a different way where one of many different uses of force would be appropriate. The system has the ability to do both less lethal uses of force. So it will have the ability for us to simulate use of our pepper spray and our tasers. And it will also allow us to use firearms in the training. The firearms are converted weapons. They run with a test mask. So the weapon will function almost as if it was a regular firearm inside the environment. Obviously, it's very safe. When the weapon discharges, it fires what amounts to basically a laser bullet, which is not visible to the officer. But through a camera system, looking back at the screen, the computer can see that laser hit and then can score as appropriate. System is designed to be an optional system to our regular firearm training program. And particularly with the use of that scenario training, that will very much augment and make our training program more robust for those who follow. It will also give us the opportunity to do year-round training, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which we certainly don't have at this point. So this is a real big opportunity for us to develop our training program for you, so forth.
Prior to the reason this is necessary, Chief, if you were saying that you might not be able to use the rain as well?
That's a possibility. It's becoming more and more restricted because of the noise and people find it so noisy.
And the money for this is coming from the rain disposal?
It's coming, yes, it is. $10,000 coming from a grant fund from MMA. And then the additional $10,000 was coming from... From that term, I guess, a safety, the city's safety, I think. Free brush, free brush, and $10,000 to come from that. So it's all...
Do you need to hand this for if people wanted to do, have some kind of training session with citizens?
For the public?
For the public?
With the laser shot system?
Yeah, if possible. If people wanted to do something on that, say, you know, learning to...
Uh, I don't... There's probably not a good use of that system.
Always thinking of money-making ideas. I'm not even... Maybe try out and make some money.
Well, this is located within the police department. So if we generated a lot of publicity from that, we should come in and out of the police department all the time. Probably would be hard to sell. I'm all for making...
I want that, if you're a police officer. Any other questions? All is in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to take the third reading by Title 14.
Second.
An order providing for authorization to purchase a laser training system. Move to adopt. Second.
Councilor Stuber?
Yes.
Councilor Mahovitch?
Yes.
Councilor Wenzel?
Yes.
Councilor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Boucher?
Yes.
Councilor Vanquert-Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero in opposed.
Order number 147, Title 1414. An order providing for approval of forfeiture. Being hereby ordered by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. Whereas the Waterville Police Department and the Regular Services Division made a contribution to the investigation in a criminal matter. Whereas the District Attorney's Office has reached successful conclusions in the following forfeiture matter. A.G.S.C.C.R. 1412 Ashley L. Duizel, $5,127 in U.S. currency. Now therefore, be ordered that the city council of the city of Waterville acting in its capacity as the municipal officers and legislative body does in accordance with state law accept the forfeited $5,127, which is the Waterville Police Department's share of the above captured forfeiture. Be further ordered that the money be appropriated for the Waterville Police Department's drug forfeiture revenue line.
Move to adopt. Second.
All is in favor?
Move to take the third reading by Title 14. Second. All is in favor?
An order providing for approval of forfeiture.
Move to adopt. Second. Councilor Stuber?
Yes.
Councilor Mahovitch?
Yes.
Councilor Wenzel?
Yes.
Councilor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Boucher?
Yes.
Councilor Vanquert-Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero in opposed. Order number 143, Title 2014. Please by Title 14.
Second.
All is in favor?
An ordinance providing for amendments to personnel ordinance. Move to adopt.
Second.
All is in favor?
Move to take the third reading by Title 14.
All is in favor?
An ordinance providing for amendments to personnel ordinance. Move to adopt. Second. Councilor Stuber?
Yes.
Councilor Mahovitch?
Yes.
Councilor Wenzel?
Yes.
Councilor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Boucher?
Yes.
Councilor Vanquert-Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero in opposed. Great, the new business, Resolution 149-2014.
A resolution providing for authorizing issuance of eviction license to Talavir Incorporated, doing business as jewel of India. It results in the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That the city council hereby authorize the issuance of the eviction license to Talavir Incorporated, DBA Jewel of India, 104 Main Street.
Move to adopt. Second.
What, uh, Mr. Talavir?
Yes.
Do you want to come and tell us about the business and when it's going to start and what you're going to do? Uh, if you could just come up here. What's up? People are very, very, very excited about Indian food, shiitake. And we've been waiting a long time to get some. So, when will you open?
First of all, good evening to everyone out here. This is my first time I'm witnessing this kind of proceedings. But as you guys are excited, we are as excited as you guys are. And we bet that we're not going to serve you very spicy food, but it will be a little bit spicy. So, we already have two branches, one in Bedford, one in South Oakland. And this is our third, and we thought that we'll definitely do a good business this new Indian restaurant here. Right now, we are under construction, we are, and hopefully, first of all... He is praying, he's the one who you'll be meeting up. He'll be the one who'll be having all the functions than at the restaurants. He himself is a very dignified chef, and I love his food whenever he makes it out. You won't go like this. So, I'm too spicy. Look, make sure.
Look at this.
Yes. It's Indian food. You gotta be... That is Indian. So, there are a few things which... We had a visit from the local fire department. They gave us a few, they noticed a few things. They gave us some nice advices. We are working on that right now. Hopefully by two weeks, two weeks, we should be able to. And we'll have grand party, grand opening, and all are welcome there.
Can you tell us your names?
My name is Rishi. Rishi. And basically, I'm his cousin, and also is interpreter, interpreter right now.
That's okay. Great. And your cousin's name?
Prem Sharma. Prem Sharma.
Prem?
P-R-E-M Sharma. Prem Sharma. Where is this going to be?
Main Street.
Main Street, right on Main Street, right next to the Manchester store, where there was a...
What's over on the other side?
Across the street. I think there was, previously, there was a banquet.
Yes. Excellent. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Do you know that we have had a Facebook page, Waterville, once, at the Indian restaurant with 400 people who were fans of that? So my guess is that your business will be pretty busy.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate that. And also, and then soon we are also be working on, I'll be advising on other social media thing also. We'll soon be creating our Facebook page where, you know, we'll post our offers also. And there was one question, I don't know if this is the right time to ask, but I know there's a opera house here and, you know, there are a lot of plays in there. I don't know, we were also, we were very much interested, you know, people who are wanting to watch the plays and all, being in...
We'll have them be in touch with you. Give your schedule and...
Yes, yes. And we would like to offer some discounts if anybody after play wants to have, you know, have...
That's a great idea.
Yes. You want to have, you know, we can have a ticket printed and have our coupon on the back of the ticket, something like that, if you want. And we are, I mean, we are very excited to get it.
There is a program that does that. But there are some that surround to do that. So I'm pretty sure somebody will be in touch with you ASAP.
All right. Thank you so much. And I really appreciate your time, everyone, so... Thank you so much.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Okay, so, all of us in favor? Great. Congratulations, you're out.
Thank you so much. Very appreciate it.
Resolution 150-2014.
A resolution providing for amendment to Resolution 141-2014, authorization of higher traffic consultants. It results in the city of Waterville, the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. Resolution 141-2014, the amendment to increase the contract amount from $45,925 to $49,000 as a result of additional work requested by the main department of transportation. Funding for this project will be shared equally by the main department of transportation and the city. The city's contribution will come from the national check account as provided for in Order 106-2014.
Move to adopt.
Second.
As the resolution says, the change in the increase in the price came as a result of DOT Department of Transportation increasing the work items for the consultant to do. Unfortunately, we didn't know that at the last time we approved the amount. So we obviously need to come back and adjust that amount. And as the resolution says, total costs split equally, state and city-wise. Our funds are coming from our half the way tip.
Yeah, at that meeting, um, we asked specifically what the study was going to be on, and they were very specific that this was not going to have anything to do with Main Street, um, so there was no need to really look at that, just to make sure that we weren't going to be handcuffing ourselves, that if in the future, um, years from now, that we weren't creating an issue in this section of Main Street that would prohibit the development or anything like that. So there was absolutely no look at changing Main Street and making it, um, QA or anything like that. So we were very specific about asking.
That's correct.
And once again, half the money's coming from DOT, and the other half comes from the Tiff, or Hathaway was sold?
Yeah, when Hathaway was sold, we created a Tiff, so that's been, uh, five or six years ago now.
Is this something that we agreed with Hathaway that we would do and...
Well, in the, in the sale of the property, we're required to investigate any and all pedestrian access through the intersection. Right. So that's in the deed of sale from the city to Hathaway, we have a responsibility to at least look at any enhancement improvements that can be made to, uh, create kind of pedestrian access through it.
And Jen Olson's not here, but, um, at that meeting, didn't she also make a great data as well that if we're going to attract businesses to this area, that that information from the study was going to be really pertinent to be able to get grants, to be able to pursue different, um, businesses to come into this area and into Hathaway? Seems like that was really important, we should not hear it.
Well, I, I think any, any data that we have about traffic counts, traffic movement, where people go through that intersection is very, very important in terms of permitting. We have to remember, we now have, I think, well over 400 people in the Hathaway building every day. I mean, Main General has pre-made, and there are 66 apartments, so there are a lot of people there, and having that information about the intersection, traffic counts, and how vehicles are passing through is very important for the future, and I agree with that.
Yeah, I just want to note, while we were standing out there, um, when we're talking about safety and traffic, we saw people running lights, um, people walking in that area, um, not in crosswalks, because there are certain places that don't have crosswalks, um, and just watching people trying to cross the street and crossing at different areas, and, um, so it was, it was a really, I think, good side of it, because it made us realize that that area is getting very, very busy and congested, and it's good for us to really see what is going on down there and how we can make it better.
All in favor?
An order providing for payment of credit enhancement agreement payments. Being hereby ordered by the City Council of the City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows: That the sum of $15,017.59 be paid to CB Diagnostics for Tiff credit enhancement agreement payments for prior years as shown below, and that set sum to be appropriated from the general fund. This will be a 2009, 2010, $3,085.11. This will be a 2010, 2011, $3,568.77. This will be a 2011, 2012, $3,622.32. This will be a 2012, 2013, $3,976.39, for a total of $15,017.59.
Move to adopt.
Second.
This request is a result of an error on the city's part in not paying out Tiff payments that were due for a three-year span to CB Diagnostics. Chuck is here to help me, but essentially, we're not sure why we didn't make the payments. The property owner never requested them, and we didn't request them, and we didn't make them, and it went off for three years, and finally, he said, "Didn't I miss some payments?" And we said, "We'll check into it," and sure enough, it's, uh, these are the asked amounts, the amounts that are due, you know? This particular credit enhancement agreement did end in 2013, so there won't be any more payments through this Tiff. It was, was it a 10-year? It was a 10-year, correct. It was a 10-year credit enhancement agreement. CB Diagnostics was a medical building built on the airport road, so this is the airport road Tiff, and back, uh, 10 years ago, 11 years ago, the council approved the Tiff, uh, credit enhancement agreement for them to build a building there, I believe, up in here at the time, but I think that's what it was. So these represent the final payment.
And it, it would have come from the Tiff, except for we've allocated all the Tiff funds for the airport this year, so there's no money left in the Tiff funds to pay that for...
Which is why they need to come from the general fund.
How is it, um, the guy to pay? Isn't there something? I can't even handle it.
Okay. The, the process is, they don't get paid, they're CEAs, until all the taxpayers have paid their taxes on wherever the Tiff is at. And so what happened was, certain taxpayers were slowing getting it paid, and there's an individual, once they're all paid, says, hey, it's time to make the payments, and then you go to the accessory and say how much it is. If they were a couple of years behind, and it wasn't necessarily them, like, there's other businesses in the area, so it kind of, they got a couple of years behind, whenever they got caught up, the individual forgot to say anything, in transition between me and Rob, and it stopped before I ever got there, I saw them were making any payments, so I was thinking, okay, it's all over with. And I never would have called up and come and contacted us, and I started looking into it. So it was kind of a two or three different people not, kind of falling out on, but they never asked for the payments. And so, it's probably two or three years ago. The last payment was made a year or two before I ever got there.
Is it a business that's still operating?
There is a couple of employees still there. The building is split, there was, the building's split in two pieces, I believe, in the eye, there was an eye office that was there, but now they're part of the color. They are now moved out on Main D, and so, one individual, he's still there, I know he still has an office there, because he was at the airport. Anyway, that's, that's how it happened, it was just kind of like, an odd thing, it was kind of two or three different things had to go, just exactly like, the fact that they never asked for the money. I mean, I can tell you that everybody else that's doing CDA payments is honest right away saying, "Where's our money?" And we have to say, "It's not paid yet." So, actually, one of the four years, we still haven't collected all the money, so we're only going to pay three of those four until, I mean, we authorized the full four years, but we're holding the last year until the last two individuals pay their taxes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All in favor?
I heard my man, Christian Ford, at the beginning, but, if you want to align everyone, Tuesday, November 4th, Tuesday, November 4th is election day, that's our next council meeting, so by the administrative ordinance, we meet Wednesday. Wednesday, the 5th, and it's our next council meeting. Just to add, if you want to align.
Okay, great. Stay tuned.